We're going to just dedicate a very short period of time here to have a special vote. And then, once that vote is over, this is no longer going to be nothing else we voted on the rest of the evening. We're going to just dig into the budget. And then our next Tuesday is our regular voting budget, well, regular voting meeting. And Dr. Brown, you're going to talk about the budget again there, correct? So if I haven't said it, we're officially calling this special, very short voting meeting to order. And I'll entertain motions regarding this very short personnel report.
I move to adopt the personnel recommendation.
Thank you, Pat. Saying goodbye, Maura. Tricia, I believe, is enjoying doing other things tonight. And Emily, I believe, you can call a roll and we'll finish up with this piece.
Sure. Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell? Aaron Crowell? Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicole LaFave?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm? Anne Reichlin? Patricia Wazle?
Yes.
I don't think that passed. I only got four.
Yeah. Sean?
No, I got Moira, didn't I? Yeah. I'm sorry. It did. My apologies.
Is Sean back on with us or, oh, we have five, correct?
We have five even without Sean.
Even better. There we go. So, so thanks. There you go, folks. You, you have your personnel report. And now, for those board members and frankly, exec team and anyone else who's joining us, let's dig into budget development. And just, I do want to point out, I actually had to put down my shade because there's sun shining in upstate New York and it's six o'clock, so I'm going to adjust that a bit. So Amanda, go ahead.
I know. I'm so thankful to all of you for allowing us to be able to do the budget overview tonight. I'm hearing some feedback. Let's see if that works. Ah, there you are. Okay, great. For those of you that were at the Finance Committee meeting, a lot of the slides that we're going to be going through will be familiar to you, but for this evening as well, we included the draft spreadsheet of the budget document as well so that we could sort of look at that. So, you know, for, for the board members, what we wanted to do this evening was to ensure that we had an opportunity to just have one more public meeting prior to Dr. Brown bringing all of you his recommendation in terms of the budget numbers, which would be on April 13th. Rob, to your point, there is a timeline that is set by the state of certain dates that we must achieve certain goals by so that we have time to be able to put things in newspapers and make public announcements and post things to websites and get things printed and in public locations. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, we had some time to discuss things. And then on April 13th, when Dr. Brown presents the budget to you, we do still have a little bit more time. We could, if the board wanted to, call an additional meeting all the way up until April 23rd. But that is essentially the last date in April that we would be able to have the budget go forward to the board for it to be adopted to then be able to go to the public. We will not have a Finance Committee meeting scheduled between now and April 13th, which is the next board meeting. There's really, at this moment in time, you know, we were a little concerned about what we were going to bring to you. We still don't have state aid numbers, but just a couple, about not even a half an hour ago, there was some highlights of sort of where they were in the budget process at the state level. It does look very promising, so I think we're pretty confident in terms of what we're showing you in terms of state aid numbers, and we'll only get better. So, so we have, I think, some really good numbers to, to share with you. We've done a lot of work on the expenditure side of the budget from the last time that we talked at Finance Committee, and I wanted to walk through those with a lot of you as well and then answer any questions that you have. So I'm going to try to abbreviate what we did on Tuesday night, but still make it thorough enough so that when this is posted, you know, on the website and people are going to sort of look for their questions to be answered or wondering what's included in, in the budget in terms of both revenue and expenditure, that we have a really solid place for them to start their research and information seeking. Again, we will continue to do as we did in past years, FAQ documents. I've already started that. We'll have all of the required documentation in terms of property tax report cards and budget overviews that will be adopted by the board as well. We'll do the budget presentation document in full and we'll also have the mailer. So I just wanted to frame that. Emily, if you don't mind, if we can just put, you know, have that PowerPoint ready to go now, we can just go slide by slide and then, then we can talk a little bit about that expenditure document as well. So Emily, then the second slide, if you don't mind. So Eldred, I hope, I hope you're on here. I wanted to pull together what your wish was at the last Finance Committee meeting, a really easy visual for people to see sort of the money, right? So this is actually not expenditure. This is revenue, but we can do this for expenditure as well, Eldred. Did I hit it on the mark?
You are my hero and always have been. Thank you.
I'm so glad. I'm really so glad. We've all been eager to share some of the visuals that we tried to pull together with the feedback that you all have given us, which has been really wonderful. You know, we do this all day long, and so to be able to convert the budget information into really palatable, you know, ways for the public to be able to understand what it is and what we're dealing with, right? So this is a, this is an example of just a way to look at revenue. Revenue is the money that comes into the district, right? And so we are a district that relies on our people, on our taxes. We levy taxes from our community members, the businesses, the homeowners. That levy, we have been within the cap. We will continue to go out at the cap this year. The cap is a calculation that was imposed a couple of years ago from the state, and it really encourages districts to put information into a formula so that we are not overtaxing our taxpayers, right? There is, that spits out sort of information that tells you this is the amount of money that you are allowed to ask for at, just in the public with a 50% approval. If you want to go over the cap, a district or any other taxable entity in New York State, taxing entity in New York State has to get a super majority, which is more than 60%. We did have to do that a couple of years ago when we had the gap elimination adjustment that impacted us and our revenue, which was a state aid piece, and we needed to overcome that from our taxpayers. This year, we will be within the cap, even though we were concerned with COVID costs and being able to run both virtual school and in-person school. We will be at the cap and we are at a 2.96% increase from last year to this year. This, once again, means that our tax rate, which is what matters to you as the taxpayer, what you see on your tax bill, the tax rate will go down again. So you will actually be paying less per thousand than you did the year prior. One important thing is that we do not control your assessed value, right? So your rate is multiplied by your assessed value, and therefore, we get the money that you would then pay in taxes. We do not control your assessment. So if your assessment did go up, you will be taking that assessed value, right, and then multiplying that with the tax rate, and that will give you information as to your taxes. And so for some folks, although the rate will go down, if your house was reassessed and it went up, your taxes may go up, but we are, we're finding, you know, across the district when we do, even with the assessed value increases, that a lot of people's tax bills have been going down year after year, which is really good news for us. The next piece of the dollar?
Amanda, if I could just interject or ask a question?
Sure.
You say the levy is within the tax cap. Are we at our absolute max on the tax cap?
That's right. So based on the calculation that we have done, this is at the, at the maximum of the tax cap, right? So you're allowed to be able to, and this will be public. We show sort of our calculation. It's actually approved by the board, and we had, we had done that a couple of months, a couple of weeks ago. We submit that to the state, and this is the number that is at the tax cap.
Right, Amanda. At one point, I thought, well, I, in our refinance of debts, we were looking at perhaps, you know, our tax cap starting with a three, but it sounds like where it really came in at 2.96, and now we are at the max. Just want to be clear on that.
That is correct. Right. And so what Rob is referring to is that when, when you do the tax cap calculation, there are certain things that you can actually exclude from that formula, and it's related to what you do in terms of your capital work, right? The improvements that we're doing across the district. And so our conversation about our capital project, which is alive and well even during COVID, right? We're continuing to do work all throughout our districts. We have to borrow money for that, and that money gets to be excluded then from the calculation. And so there was a moment in time when we were looking at our borrowing, and it was going to impact the tax cap and potentially allow us to levy more taxes. But what we did do, we worked with our fiscal advisors, and we actually tried to determine how much we want to borrow, look at the exclusion to ensure that we were not going out above that 3%. So we're, we were able to work with them to really come in a zone that felt really comfortable. I think the conversation with the board at that time was sort of, anything over 3%, especially right now, that, that feels, that feels big. That feels like, you know, that's, that's a large increase, and we really wanted to be mindful of that, so we work with fiscal for it. Rob?
Thanks, Amanda.
Of course.
On special, $299 just for today, right?
No. This will be in, for this year, this is the way it'll be. This is what you'll be seeing in your, in your tax bills. So, so no, there's no March Madness or anything. This is, this is the way it is.
Psychological pricing. Go ahead, Amanda.
Right. Yep. State and federal stimulus is the next piece. So for those of you that have been watching, it has been a little nail-biting in the sense of wondering what our state numbers were going to be, right? So we receive state aid either through a formula or through reimbursement of what we're purchasing or doing, our services such as like transportation or BOCs. And so we're tracking that really closely. The number that is showing right here in terms of the state aid amount, which is the $32 million, that is based on data that will change as soon as our new state aid runs come out in, who, who knows, maybe a couple of hours, okay? So we'll be updating this, and so the presentation information that I'm giving you this evening is based on the January state aid runs. It also includes the stimulus monies that we have received over two different presidencies, right? So there were stimulus monies that were given to us during the Trump administration, and now there are new stimulus monies that are given to us during the Biden administration. And so the next slide will talk about the newest ones under the Biden administration. This information is about the, the money that's, monies that we received during the Trump administration. And then finally, the other miscellaneous revenue makes up a very small amount. That has definitely fluctuated during COVID because we're unable to, you know, rent our buses out or our buildings out or collected missions for things or, you know, even our reimbursements and rebates from BOCs has been thrown off because services were different. They had changed. So we'll be tracking this. Emily, our treasurer, is fantastic about keeping information about this revenue alive and well. And so when we come to you with our final numbers for Dr. Brown's presentation, those will be really, really based on the COVID years and then also the US. Emily, next slide, if there are no questions on this one. Thank you, Emily. So as I mentioned before, right, there was stimulus money over two, two presidencies. This is the newest stimulus money that is, is being released to school districts. So we are anticipating, based on the data that we received so far, that we would have almost $5.5 million that would be granted back to school districts to be able to be used to support COVID costs, which everyone knows has really put a burden on school districts trying to really support everything from mental health to technology to teachers that are teaching virtually and also in classrooms, additional need for substitutes, you know, leave that, that people went on. So this should be really helpful. There, every day, there's more and more information coming out about how we are supposed to be able to use this, this money. Is it going to be just one year? Is it going to be over the course of a couple of years? I will, I'm going to show you that we have it budgeted for next year, and then what we plan to do is utilize fund balance, right? So if it, if it's not received and we don't have information at that time, I will show it as revenue coming out of fund balance, but it will then be reimbursed once we receive it. So Emily, if you could go to the next slide, please. This is information that's, that's relevant for revenue, and again, it's at this moment in time, okay? So the, the, I'm going to go sort of row by row for you. So again, revenue drives our ability to pay for our operations, right? And there is revenue that we know is coming our way, and then there is revenue that the, we still yet, is yet to be known. The yellow number in the first row, the state aid row, that is what I mentioned, is the January numbers that we should be getting anytime soon, and I will update that once we get our new state aid numbers. But essentially, this is the worst-case scenario of what we believe we would receive from the state aid from New York State in terms of revenue from formula aid and reimbursement aid. The next row was the pandemic adjustment last year. So that was the sort of first stimulus package that came out of the Trump administration. The next row is the local adjustment. If you remember, there was a lot of confusion on those January state aid runs from Governor Cuomo that essentially adjusted most districts' school aid runs down by the amount of your star rebate that you received. And then you got essentially the second stimulus package from the federal government to cover that loss that was removed from our state aid run. So what you're seeing there is based on January information. We will know more once the, the budget information comes to us from the state. If this local adjustment will continue, if it will go away, we will know much more about that first row in terms of the state aid run. The COVID-19 CARES supplemental stimulus money, that is factual. That will be coming our way. That is federal money.
So Amanda, just before you go on, so last year Cuomo did a pandemic adjustment. Every, every dollar that came through the stimulus, he took out of our budget. And, and he was worried about state revenues, and rightfully so, a lot of expenses there. So this year, it, it looks like you're saying he will probably take a lot of that back, but we will come out a little bit ahead, and that, that is in addition to the almost $5.5 million. But, but there is a chance that since the state is getting all of this money also, that he won't take that $4 million away? Is there a chance of that?
There is a chance of that. So we don't know yet. According to the information, literally, it was like 23 minutes ago, I think, from organizations that represent school boards and organizations that represent school business officials, we've been receiving emails about sort of some updates that are in the budget bills. And one of them said, I believe that there's an additional $1.4 billion that's coming out to school districts that most likely will support sort of this local adjustment or reverse it in some way, right? There's also some conversation about the foundation aid, which if you remember correctly, if I were to break down that state aid line, foundation aid, it makes a little, as a part of that, we have been locked in at our same rate since 2019. And so there's also conversation about refunding and getting districts back up to where they need to be for, for the future. So Pat, it's too soon to tell. The mention of that $5.5 million, if you notice, that's under the, the row underneath the state aid. That's new federal funding. It's called the American Rescue Plan, ARPA. I've included that underneath the state aid lines because it, it just gets confusing for everybody.
But it's, but that's coming, that doesn't pass through the state. I mean, that, you know that's coming.
That is correct. So that, it was treated differently. They, the, the aid or the, the stimulus money that Governor Cuomo utilized was passed through the state. And what he did was he used it to replace state aid. He decreased our state aid and replaced it with federal aid. This money is bypassing the state, and it is coming to us like our title's monies come to us, which is a federal aid directly federally.
But he, but he couldn't say, oh, I know they're getting it, so I'm going to hold back another $5 million?
According to the information that we're getting on the email list serves, that is not what happened in the budget bills, no.
I, I'm just, I'm just going to say, my camera's off right now because I'm laughing and crying at the same time. That's finally, we have money. Dirt for this, and this is the way it happened. So thank you, Amanda.
Of course, of course.
Amanda, you're, you're going to go down to the other, other numbers here. I, well, but I guess, well, I'll, why don't you go through the other numbers and then, then I'll ask the question?
Great. So tax levy, we reviewed with the, with the dollar bill. That's, that's our major source of revenue. Other miscellaneous revenue, we also reviewed on that dollar bill. And again, that might fluctuate a little bit, but we think that that's really close. So if you add the total of the, sort of the top area, right, that $33 million with the ARPA funding, the tax levy and the miscellaneous revenue, that puts us at what we would consider to be sort of real revenue, right now at $139 million, okay? So as you all know, and we do this every year, that tells us sort of what we're bringing in. We also, at the same time, are calculating what it costs to run the district. You take those two numbers, and there oftentimes, almost every year, there is a gap, right, between the real revenue that we bring in and what we think it's going to take to run the district, the budget document, the expenditures. They're not, they are a moment-in-time study. They are what we think we know at that moment in time to be able to, you know, what it's going to cost us. With COVID, we have been very transparent to say, we are building a budget that gives us the agility, the opportunity to respond to what is going to be coming our way when any of the documents that tell us how to run school from six feet to three feet will occur. We're going to be able to build a budget that will deal with mental health issues of staff and students. We want to build a budget that might be able to support or will support in-person as well as potentially either hybrid or virtual, right? Because we know that it's, this is not one of those moments in our lifetime that the, like, you know, curtain is up and we go back to, to whatever it, we defined as normal two years ago. And so we need to be able to have a budget, and we're very honest about this. This is a larger budget increase than we have seen in years past because we need to build it that way. We do not know what we're going to need to be able to fund the operations for next year. We know we're going to have to have summer programs like we've never had before. We need, we know that we have unknowns. And so right now, if you look at this, the good news, right, and to Pat's point, right, the laughing and crying is like, the good news is we actually believe that in terms of the real revenue we are going to be bringing in with the fund balance, we will be able to build a budget that would support our operations next year. And just like every year, this money that we have budgeted to support next year, we will manage it. We will manage it every day. We will manage the decision-making behind it. We have all of our stakeholders, right? We will assess the needs of all of the programs to say, okay, we budgeted for that. Do we really need it? Do we need all of those virtual teachers? Oh, maybe not. Okay. Do we need more mental health? Okay, let's transfer money over. Oh, do we need the money that we put into transportation? Maybe, maybe not, right? Will athletics come back full-fledged? We want to build a budget to support that agility. So Rob, that's my overview of these rows. I know you had some questions. I'm going to, I'm going to try to answer them.
Oh, no, it's really just the, the basic, basic question that we, we as a board have to wrestle with just a little bit. But just should know, going back to your, you know, the state aid run, that's a, that's not a known, known right now. Eventually, it will be, but just hypothetically, say, we get another $2 million. So our, our state aid run is $34 million. And so our cost of doing, our estimated cost of doing business in, in '21, '22, that's set at $145, $179, $885. That's the number that you're bringing to us that we will go to the public with. That's not going to change regardless of what the state does, correct? Right. And so if we get another $2 million, then we, as a board, we only have really two, two options. And so obviously, we would use less fund balance, correct, Amanda? Right?
Yes. You, you have two options. You could use less fund balance, or the one thing that I'm wondering about and we don't know yet is that ARPA money, if they're going to require us using it over multiple years. So we may need to decrease that allocation in that line. We, the one slide that I did eliminate from this slide deck that I shared at Finance was our health in terms of fund balance. I, I really, you know, we, we've, we've reviewed fund balance. You probably, as a board, know the fund balance better than any board in the state because we talk about it a lot, right? Because we want to know that if there is a rainy day, it is there for us. As you can see on this plan here, Rob, we are actually decreasing the amount of fund balance that we believe we need to use to fill that gap between revenue and expenditure. And depending on what the ARPA rules are, we might have to adjust it a bit, but I am confident that we will be able to end this year and be able to roll forward the fund balance if necessary to cover that gap in need of revenue.
Right. The main point is that, you know, essentially, if we get more state aid, it will, it will go into that fund balance calculation. We, as a board, certainly have the oppor, you know, we can reduce the tax levy if we wanted to, but we haven't done that for quite a while because of the restrictions on that tax levy, and we've gone to the max basically since, well, it's probably eight or 10 years ago when they said you can no longer roll over unused levy. And so we were penalized for not going to our full extent of our tax levy limit, that tax cap. So we're going to go with a $145, and just so folks understand that if we get another $2 million in aid, that's not going, doesn't mean we spend $147, right? So it's, you know, that's our number, and then we're going to be dealing with fund balances that can fluctuate. We really, we spent that down quite a bit. This is an opportunity to build it back up. And I do think the ARPA is going to expect us to manage that money over a couple of years. And, you know, it's there for not just '21, '22, but for that next year. And what we don't want to do is get into a funding clip and, right? So spread things out, but opportunity probably to build up our reserves, I would think. And I think as well, the state is letting us go over 4% or, you know, we're, we're able to build up reserves a bit more. We have a lot of reserve lines, so it shouldn't be an issue for us, correct?
My, my understanding is that they're not sending out staff to audit folks on the 4%.
Thanks, Amanda.
And, and Rob, just to clarify for folks that are listening, when Rob mentioned the 4%, that's essentially the savings account that a school district is allowed to reserve money into or put money into what's called fund balance, and it's not for a particular purpose. It actually is, is an account that you would, you would be able to put money into and use it and allocate it to balance your budget. Um, or, you know, if you if you needed it and you're having sort of a, you know, any kind of emergencies or things, it's there. It's not a restricted reserve, right?
But the uh, the bond auditors and the bond uh, folks like to make sure that we have four percent. And that we're um, and it goes to the health of the district, which goes to our insurance, what's sorry, our interest rates that we uh, are able to um, seek for our bonds uh, and lending and borrowing, et cetera, et cetera. Sorry, I've got my tongue got tied there, Amanda, but that.
So with that, um, I think we can move on if there's no other questions about this. So um, in this presentation, Emily, if you could just go to the next slide. I just wanted to explain a couple of things that we did include and we talked about at length in Finance Committee. Um, you know, the the board has always asked us sort of, you know, are we, how are we doing during COVID, right? Are we are we saving money? Are we spending more money? Um, and and the answer is it depends on the um, the code uh, in the budget. It depends on the area of the budget. And it depends on the amount of money that is budgeted in that area relative to the total, right? So there are certain areas of the budget where there there um, there really are sort of our higher expenditure, more money is budgeted in those areas. And then there are other areas of the budget that although millions, right? It's not like we're talking about a hundred and forty million dollars total. Um, so this was just a slide that we used to show at Finance um, that essentially the red row or the red bar is what we budgeted, right? So again, a moment in time, back last year, this is what we budgeted and we thought that we would need. And then the the bar above it, that's in that black color, is essentially anticipated expenditure through the end of the year. So there is real money that we've spent already that we've liquidated. And then there's also what we think we're going to continue to spend based on forecasting throughout the end of the year. Okay, so you can see in some places, we actually are going to spend more than what we budgeted. Facilities is a really good example of that. And then in other places, there are savings. Okay, so all of those things balance out. And I I did mention at Finance Committee, this is not the entire budget. These are just a couple of areas, ways to look at, you know, a couple of areas that we pulled out to just show, are we saving, are we spending um, depending on those line items? And we can do that for any area of the budget. So the reason why we put this into the presentation is because we wanted everyone to know that this year is so unique for us, right? We're trying to place the sort of COVID year in the entire picture of our sort of typical behavior. Um, and so that said, so sometimes when you're going to see increases or decreases without within this budget document, we're trying to um, incorporate the the COVID response as well.
Hey, Amanda, I have a question about this slide.
Sure.
Two areas. I'll raise my questions. One is transportation. Given that we've been um, supplying the community with food and maybe having them do all sorts of unanticipated runs to get kids from A to B, how in the world does that one seem to um, save us money? I would have thought that our actual expenditures would have been pretty high. That's the first question. And the second question is, I'm assuming the increase in professional development all has to do with teaching in a new world.
So I I'm going to speak to the the first one and I have um, the best part about getting closer to the budget vote day is that um, my colleagues get to jump in because they're the stakeholders and they're the ones that are dealing with this every day. So um, I invite Lily and Mary and Dan and Bob to unmute Dr. Brown. Um, I'll speak to transportation. So Eldred, remember, we are in person, although we are delivering meals in person, we are essentially, you know, transporting many fewer young people um, than we ever did before. Parents are driving young people to school more often. Um, we have had closures that have impacted many days where buses would have been on the road um, doing longer runs to many, many, many more houses, many, many, many more miles. Essentially, all field trips, all extracurriculars. Um, until just recently, sports, uh, anything that all of the experiences that L E C S would have had, uh, transporting young people back and forth. Um, daycare centers are not open. After school programs are not open. So transportation, yes, on one side of your brain, you say, oh, my goodness, we must be. The reality is we're not. We are actually at a at a at a much smaller scale than we've ever been before. But you can't budget that way next year. You can't budget for this tiny little piece. You have to go essentially back up to what was sort of our typical or our expected numbers of runs. P D, Lily, I'm gonna let you, I see your.
Yeah, I'd be happy to jump in on this. So um, part of this professional development number that you see, that one million dollars, that includes the Ifeaka Teachers Association P D funds, professional development funds that each teacher is permitted to use at their discretion. So they apply and there's a committee at each building or in each department um, that looks at each of these requests. And we've seen a dramatic drop in those requests for those individual teachers. Um, so that is uh, that's really what what you're seeing there. We're still, we still have a very robust professional development experience. Um, Mary Grover has been overseeing incredible work, I would say, around especially around literacy work and inclusion work. Um, and the master educators of inclusion have been doing fabulous work in terms of job embedded professional development as well. And so big, big shout out to Mary and uh, Jen Gondak and the and the work that that they've been doing there. Um, but it's really in relationship to those I T and P D funds and the significant decrease that we're seeing. I think in part because people are kind of tapped out, right? They're they're engaging in the P D that that um, we may be offering, you know, and and getting support on Wednesdays um, and are going to fewer conferences, frankly, right? Which is what what we've seen before.
Thanks, Lily.
I'm done.
So the next slide, Emily. This um, if you if you were to compare this slide uh, to the Finance Committee meeting, there were uh, numbers on this that we had in bright yellow. And essentially, at that moment in time, we said we were gonna try to, we were working on them. Um, we wanted to make sure that we captured what we needed um, in terms of what our cost would be for fiscal year twenty twenty two. And we still, we admitted we still a lot of work to do because, again, trying to anticipate the unknowns. Um, where we have had a number of meetings talking about um, what do we need to be, you know, how much do we need to be? What does this look like? What is the cost of that, right? We identify a need, we try to fill it and 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 cost it out. We identify something that maybe we had, but we might not need anymore. Try to cost that out. Um, and we also tried to, again, incorporate something in the middle, right? We might need that. And we wanted to make sure that we weren't um, eliminating things from the budget development document that left us in a situation where we couldn't respond. And we don't want to do that. We want to be able to respond as best we can. Um, and we want to be able to always remember that although these are numbers on the pages, it's about people and about families and about kids. And so these are drivers. These are the budget drivers that you really, um, these are the non-negotiables. These are the things that we know we needed to build into next year. Um, we have obligations to all of our bargained units. Um, they have uh, contracts that are in place. COVID does not change that. Um, and so those contracts oftentimes are going years into the future. And so we knew that there was a certain amount of salary that we needed to incorporate into um, the budget for next year. Benefits, benefits always increase, right? Um, we did, we have had fluctuations in some lines, specifically health insurance. People were afraid to go out to the doctor. They were using maybe telemedicine more. Um, and so we wanted to ensure that we built a budget that um, sort of represented what a typical year would be, but also recognizing that people um, you know, have uh, have changed sort of their lifestyles. And so um, we wanted to, and those, that's a budget driver for sure. Uh, COVID staffing related expenses. We know that we increased the number of staff that we have um, in the books uh, in our databases to to be able to serve kids. And whether those staff were substitute teachers or um, hires for a year or two or three, um, we needed to be able to meet young people in a virtual world as well as an in-person world and sometimes both at the same time. And so we really did a lot of analysis of the number of staff in terms of the increases that we needed to meet them in this fiscal year and then next year, what still needs to carry forward. We don't think we need all of it, but we're definitely gonna need probably most of it. Um, the B O S E's cost, that's always a driver. Their their costs go up. Those are our kids, right? They happen to be up there at B O S E's, but they are our students. And so um, we knew that that was going to be increasing as well. And then finally, the non-personnel related, so the non-people related things um, that were related to COVID. We need to ensure that we, you know, have our sanitation procedures and um, opportunities for us to do testing and all the filters and HVAC and uh, furniture and things that we needed for our buildings, whether it be indoor or outdoor learning or even virtual learning, computers, uh, hotspots, things like that that we needed to incorporate. So this slide just is a, again, just a quick overview of the drivers. There are many more things that increase and decrease budgets, right? Um, and so in the F A Q document, we're gonna try to, you know, just once again, re-educate folks because we don't do this all the time, right? This is budget season, so I forget. Um, what makes things go up and down in our budget document? What what um, makes uh, you know, is it, does it mean that when something is decreased that there is a cut to that service? That is not accurate, right? People retire, new people are hired. There's a difference in those salaries. Budget documents catch up with behaviors. Budget documents catch up with reality and they also plan for future. So just because um, you know, in in the public, this document is there and you see increases and decreases, um, it doesn't always align with, oh, they must have added three positions or they must have decreased. That is, that's not the case. Sometimes it's a recoding due to state mandates. We have to actually move something from one area of the budget to another. Um, and so we have to, we have to essentially move those monies around so that when we file our reports, they're accurate. Um, we get grant funds. Sometimes we are able to take costs that are in the general fund budget, which is what we take to the public and move it over uh, to a grant or vice versa because the grant went away and we have to absorb it. And then obviously, um, you know, we have to evolve with this world that we're living in, which is is still quite a bit unknown. So um, I have one more slide, although there's many more um, that Eldred, to again, your request and and the Finance Committee. I so thank you for helping us um, take information. That's a lot of numbers and charts and tables that may not be something that everybody likes to see and make it a little more visual and a little just easier, right? So this is essentially by bargain unit um, the way that our salaries break down in the district. And so you can see sort of where um, if you were to look at our budget and look at the the salary that we budgeted, right, which is millions of dollars, how does it break down and what percentage goes where? And so that was another request from the Finance Committee and we hope that um, we'll be able to be put putting this in our budget documents moving forward as well.
Yes, but uh, let me just remind everybody, the goal was not to um, eliminate questions. We just want better questions. And if we don't get better questions, the ones that are not that good can be answered with a couple of quick images. But Amanda, this is really good stuff. I I I, given our community, I think this this is going to lead to a lot better questions. I won't um, anger us so much when our neighbors come knocking on our door with muffins on fire about X and Y.
Well, and it's never perfect, right? So um, again, as we move forward, we here in the business office, um, the executive team, whatever we can do to try to take information um, and and push it out, get it out to the community so that maybe even their questions are answered prior to um, them having to find a free Tuesday night at seven o'clock to come and ask. They can do it from the comfort of their own home. So we really, we really are trying. And so if there's anything that we can do uh, to make that better, just you just let us know.
I did just want to point out, is it okay, Amanda, if I'm just, you know, I'm sure the board members recognize this as well. So this is truly just salary, so it doesn't include benefits. It doesn't it doesn't include our contributions to E R S and T R S systems as well, which are which are outlined further in that more detailed document that she included as well. But it gives you gives you a sense of the ratio and proportion.
So in um, I'm I'm just thinking that it's probably best at this point in time, Emily, if you don't mind. Oh, there's a type. Moira, you're wonderful. I will take care of it. I will take care of it. Substitutes. Thank you. You know, I don't get practice on my um, my English skills very often in the business office. I used to be a lot better when I did paperwork that I was doing. Um, the next slide, Emily, if you could just show it, and we're not going to go through all of them. Um, but Emily can just sort of like, kind of maybe every couple of seconds, just kind of cascade through these. This is a different way of looking at the budget expenditure report that I shared with all of you and which is on Board Docs, which is the larger spreadsheet. These are taking essentially just the 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 line items and categorizing them, aligning them what you might see in the audit report um, so that you could actually look at this document, see what we budgeted. In the audit report, it shows you what we actually expended the prior year and now what we're budgeting moving forward. And so it'll just give you a sort of sense of um, topic by topic or area by area or department by department um, sort of how things are moving and changing and growing. The spreadsheet that I shared with you is what will be in the budget presentation document. That will be widely available on the website, in um, public locations. Um, I'm thinking this year due to COVID because people aren't getting out as much. I think what we're gonna really try to do too is is send out tweets and um, you know, Facebook posts and just reminding people that this information is there. And at any time, Marta in our office here can, you know, make copies um, of things uh, for folks. And so that way, um, if they if they want actually the paper copies of things in terms of the detail, we have that as well. But this is just, again, a really nice way to kind of chunk the information um, sort of by by area. And it ends, obviously, with that total budget. We still have work to do, uh, you know, to make sure that Dr. Brown is ready for uh, April thirteenth. With that, I am going to um, sort of just quiet myself and listen now and get some feedback from all of you, answer any questions that you have. Um, again, that that larger spreadsheet that we've shared both on Board Docs and um, to you, Board, directly, that hopefully has a lot of information in it. Anytime that there's a budget in a item that went up or down, I try to, in red underneath that line, explain why that fluctuation occurred from one year to the next.
And Amanda, you know, looking through the budget document, I thought that was very helpful. You know, it really uh, provided a lot of clarity as uh, well, just kind of reading through uh, historically. Seemingly, uh, the best, the idea was to make it as confusing as possible back in the old days. Um, and what went into the numbers, uh, but it's, I think it really goes a long way. And just a quick explanation in the in the that red, the red blocks and also the red uh, red type, right? And it's um, I thought it was very helpful. And uh, I still don't understand why you had to spend five more dollars uh, to get eighty five instead of just eighty, but uh, uh, cut Dr. Brown's budget by five bucks. I mean, I'm, I'm, what can I say?
No taken, Rob. I'm gonna go back to Angela. Tell her what you need is zero.
Take it from Dr. Brown, give it to Lily. I mean, that's uh, that's. But uh, uh, well, while folks are thinking, a hundred and forty five million is a lot of money. Um, and I think we all need to uh, think about that. Um, and uh, Dr. Brown, I said a long time ago, a hundred million dollars is a lot of money. You should be able to do a lot with a hundred million dollars and that was ten years ago. Um, or eleven years ago. So um, the we're this is a budget and uh, I think you can probably say, um, the exec team, that uh, you're not looking at a lot of personnel cuts here. Uh, I think you're looking at additions um, in many areas, um, and hopefully to meet the need of fully reopening this district. of fully reopening this district. And that's right, there's still a lot of unknowns, but, um, anticipating fully reopening. And what does it take to do that? And communicating that to the community. And yes, it's, what was it? A hundred and thirty-six million last year or was that, you're right. That's a lot of money. But yeah, now we're, uh, about one forty-five, uh, that's, you know, there's a lot of resources there. Um, it just, uh, let's, uh, let's just put it to good use and, uh, and get folk, get kids back in the classroom as soon as possible.
Ms. Davis, Rebecca, this, this meeting tonight is important because we can reference this meeting for folks who want to know more technical information or more details. On Tuesday night, I hope that we can have a bit more strategic conversation about what we hope to accomplish in the fall, the summer, the fall and beyond. And what is our five-year vision for instruction, for instruction here and how this budget will support that? So, um, so foreshadow Tuesday's next with the thirteenth. We hope to just frame what we hope for teaching and learning, um, in the near future.
Right. It's, uh, talking about what is the value proposition? You know, we're seeing the cost, so what's the value? And, uh, what do we, what, what is the community getting for that? And I think we've tried to have that conversation over, well, over 10 years. And, uh, this is another opportunity to do that. And, uh, but, uh, appreciate, uh, yes, certainly appreciate the year-round budgeting, constantly working on, um, how best to spend, uh, well, really again, Amanda, these local dollars. But ninety-eight million raised locally, correct? I mean, that's, um, that's a huge amount. And, uh, that used to be the full budget or, you know, you know, that's, um, so that's, uh, that's a great, uh, great resource. And, uh, we just need to make sure that's, uh, we do everything that, uh, we, uh, we say we're gonna do and, uh, you know, promises made, promises kept. That was an old.
I know, I know a lot of people are looking forward to hearing, um, Dr. Brown, your vision for what will be different when we come back, including what lessons I've learned. Not tweaking around the edges, not reform, not how can we do this thing slightly differently? But for, to Rob's point, a hundred fifty million should give us the, uh, flexibility to just do different things. How do we keep those kids who excelled or really benefited from distance learning or virtual learning continuing down that path? How do we get these kids out of these seats as much as possible, right? How do we give them new avenues to tell us how they're smart? Instead of spending all these millions trying to figure out if they're smart, et cetera, et cetera. And I, I, you know, I know you, I know you're prepped for that, but I'm just sort of speaking on behalf of everything I've heard about how we're going to use this moment to, um, to really evolve and not just reform.
So Amanda, I'm not sure whether this is a, a finance committee meeting or is, um, you know, I'm just, uh, I had fun, a policy that was fun. So I, you know, I'm just hanging out. So, uh, so it's, uh, I ran the, the voting piece, but, uh, there's finance committee members here and I would, uh, uh, let them, uh, run with it and see what else we wanted to talk about today.
All right. From a finance member's perspective, Amanda, one of the slides you showed with the red bars, I found fascinating. I think it was the benefits. And it showed that they increased about two million roughly. And to a lot of people in the public or even here on the call might say, wow, that's a lot of money. Perhaps you could find a way to simply put that in context of how wonderful that is. Only went up two million, when in the past we've known it's gone up by some multiple of that. So that was, that would be my only comment on that one slide.
Sure. So, right, the, I think the benefits of, um, public employment, the benefits of public employment, and I mean, the benefits of the benefits. So, um, every staff that, uh, we hire, right? Their benefits essentially, if they're here based on their contract long enough, there is, um, an ability to be able to carry those benefits with you well into retirement and, um, essentially until not just your end of employment, but your end of life. So that benefits include things like your retirement, right? So at certain, in the New York state system, um, the school district covers, uh, funding your retirement, um, whether you're in an employee in the employee retirement system or a teacher in the teacher retirement system. And at a certain time, depending on when you were hired and how long you've worked, the school district takes on essentially all of that cost and they are funding that for you so that when you retire, there's an amount of money that you have as a retirement savings. That's what you see there. Um, that's driven, there's a state rate for that. We, um, we budget based on the state rate. It's not set by the local district that's set by the state. And so we actually do a formula and a calculation, uh, for all of our employees. We add that together and that's what we know we need. Other benefits that are there are health insurance, dental vision. Those are, those are huge. And so, and again, those last, depending on how long you've worked here and what your contract says through retirement, um, and through your end of life. And so, um, those employee benefits in terms of health insurance, we, although we've, um, you know, moved away from the consortium and we're self-funded and we've negotiated some changes to the way that we pay for prescriptions and the way that we pay for medical services. That is one of the richest health insurance plans, um, I think in the region. Uh, it's, it's pretty amazing. So, uh, again, all of these things are driven through the contract. So I see there's a comment there. You're, you're right, Mike. There are certain, um, certain bargained units where benefits will be different from other bargained units, right? Employees and teachers, they're different. They're in two different retirement systems. Substitute union versus other unions, they have different benefit levels, um, versus others. Some unions, right, the, the benefits may or may not have been negotiated in terms of, um, health and or, um, you know, other, other aspects. Some other benefits that are there, workers' comp, um, workers' compensation. If you were to go out on an injury, unemployment insurance is also there as well. So those are some of the things that, um, that are included in that line. And Eldred, you're right. I mean, think about it. We have, you know, uh, I think Bob, are we up to like twelve hundred employees? I think that is, um, so twelve hundred, uh, folks that, um, live in the region, that work for us and that, again, depending on how their, their contract has been negotiated, defining those benefits there too.
Amanda, I really, well, I guess I looked briefly, uh, but didn't look that hard. Our calendar, the budget calendar, um, Dr. Brown is going to, uh, discuss, present, um, provide, uh, some color to the, uh, narrative to the budget next week on the thirteenth, right? So the date that the board has to vote on the budget is when?
According to the, to the board calendar, right, your next meeting is April thirteenth. That is when Dr. Brown is presenting. According to our budget calendar, which can move, it can fluctuate. It's not set in stone. We are scheduled to have the board adopt the budget on April thirteenth. By state law, if we need to have another meeting, right? Just like you would have scheduled this one this evening. You have until April twenty-third for us to be able to adopt the budget and meet all of the deadlines that are imposed on us by the state to be able to get, um, anything uploaded to state websites that are required of us in terms of real property tax, uh, you know, reports and information out, um, to newspapers and to the public so that they have, um, the, the mandated time to be able to review documents in time for our budget hearing and then the budget vote.
So my only, uh, my only concern, uh, is just that, um, we had a deep dive into the budget at the last finance work session, I believe. Um, and, you know, certainly not all board members were there at that point. We talked about the budget, you know, off and on. This is an opportunity to do it again where we don't have a full board here tonight. Uh, it is, uh, vacation week a bit. So, uh, so I think folks, you know, uh, we can bring it up, uh, on Tuesday. It is a voting meeting. Uh, all it takes is someone to make a motion and, uh, get five votes. We can, uh, we're good to go. Um, so I think it's, yeah, I mean, typically I would, I would like more, uh, more board members to be up to speed. But I think we do year-round budgeting and Eldred, uh, you know, certainly for finance. You know, if, um, you know, it's, I'm, I'm certainly at the point where, um, this is our budget number, our final budget number, that one forty-five and it ends in a five. But, uh, so it's mainly coming up with that budget number. And, uh, there's a lot behind that. Yes, we're not going to know exactly what our fund balance will be here or whatever. But that's not what we vote on. We vote on that budget number. And, uh, essentially in setting that tax levy number. And those are the two items that we really need to know. And, um, so that's, so we'll, uh, we'll go into Tuesday. With an expectation we could, you know, pass the budget on that night. And we certainly have until the twenty-third. You know, in the past, we've had multiple meetings, you know, meetings, you know, um, on a Thursday or another day as we work through, um, different conditions, um, looking at trying to save as many, jobs and programs as possible and coming up with a, with a solution to, um, Pat and Moira, we've, well, we've gone through it, uh, a solution to, uh, questions with no answer, right? And, uh, you know, how best to, uh, come up with, what are we going to do with, uh, being cut dramatically by the state to help their budget, but, you know, trying to decimate ours, right? But we're different circumstances. So, uh, I appreciate not being in those circumstances. I, Pat alluded to it earlier, I think. Um, so, uh, well, uh, we look forward to a next Tuesday. I don't have to keep talking other than, you know, Judy went down to visit her mother again and, uh, so I don't have anything else to do. Jethro, uh, I do have Jethro, I do have to go let out.
I just wanted to add that, yeah, I think Pat, um, you hit it out the park when you, um, alluded to the huge sigh of relief that's going to go up throughout the community that we're not going to be, we're not going to be paying a bill that, uh, somebody else wrote, our governor wrote. That's going to be huge, but still, underlying that, there are going to be people who are going to always accuse any folks in leadership of hiding some of that money, right? Hiding that rainy cloud money under, under a blanket somewhere. So we still have to be exceedingly clear. Again, Amanda, thanks for the, those images. If you want to send me some more, you know, if you figure out a draft, I'll have to look at them, but that's a wave of the future. Just position our people to ask better questions. That's all I got, Rob. I don't even have a cat, but I do have chickens. So maybe I need to go put them in.
Moira, Pat, anything? Um, you're the other board members here.
Eldred, you need, you need to guard the hen house to keep the fox away. That's all I know about chickens. You did a really, really clear, transparent job about what's happening with the money this year. At having come on the board right before the fiscal cliff that we fell off, or right around the time, ten years ago. I'm still, I'm, I'm just still not quite in, in denial, but, but I'm still, I'm still not taking it in that somehow money has been given to us. But I also remember, you know, the year that Obama gave us money for a year and then it went away and that's when things got really tough. So, you know, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world if it had to be spread over two years. But, um, I, I do think that most people in the district do know about the added expense that this past year has brought and that next year is going to bring. I don't think that most people in this district want us to cut staff services. I think parents are, parents and caregivers are clamoring for more resources for their kids based on what they lost this year due to circumstances with all of our, our, everyone's best intentions. And, um, hopefully, you know, we can pass a budget that will provide what our kids need. So thank you for your explanation. Thank you. Thank you all for your work on the budget, um, your treasures.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, thanks, Pat, and, uh, really thanks to the exec team. Bob, Mary, Lily, even Dr. Brown. And, uh, it was deeply involved in the budget process, I know. But, uh, Amanda and, uh, and your team. And I didn't, I, when we had our, the tenure reviews, Moira, that was last, was that last Thursday? Uh, right, the tenure reviews, right? Yeah, and it's, uh, I didn't say it last Thursday, which I probably should have, but, uh, how, how nice it was to be able to see though, all the principals, well, though group of principals, at least seeing that. We as board members, uh, you know, um, typically at least try to go out and visit some schools or, it's really been, um, really a thought that I really shouldn't just drop in or really shouldn't be going to schools, right? And so it's been a, it's been a difficult year, uh, obviously as, uh, as, as the board providing, trying to provide oversight or just advice and guidance, you know? We really can't be on campus that much. And, um, so we look forward to, um, the reopening, look forward to, uh, being able to do, do that, uh, tour schools with the superintendent every now and then. Just trying to get back into, uh, into the buildings, going to games and going to concerts and that. If, uh, if a hundred and forty-five million gets us that, um, I'll gladly, uh, I'll gladly go for it. So, um, any, anything else, um, we can let everybody go. And, uh, and Amanda, we're, uh, OACM meeting on Thursday, right? We're gonna talk about, uh, how to spend, uh, another twenty-two million dollars, I think, something like that, right?
Capital project, it's, it's always happening.
I'm good. I can go home and everybody else should, I think, right? See you all. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Doc.